I'd like to call this meeting to order, a special meeting. It's 5:00 PM Tuesday, October 16th. Special meeting of Oconee County Council to be held at 5:00 PM concurrently with Oconee County Council's Law Enforcement, Public Safety, Health and Welfare Committee. The committee meeting in that members of council who are not on the committee plan to attend and participate in the committee's regular scheduled meeting. At this time, I will turn it over to the Chairman of Law Enforcement, Public Safety, Health and Welfare, Mr. Wayne McCall.
I'd like to call this meeting to order.
Mr. McCall, will you turn your mic back to you?
Okay, and first off, we want to have the approval of the minutes of October 9th.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I don't need that hammer. That's a weapon. Alright. As you know from the amended agenda, Ms. Kamik will be able to speak. She's got a prior mandatory engagement. We have several discussion items, and I'm... We can switch it around. We can switch solid waste and animal control, can't we, on the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Alright. Alright, I have two people signed up to speak for animal control, the animal ordinance, and then I'm gonna get Mark Lyles up here to address it also. Trish Waters.
My name is Trish Waters, and I am the AKC Liaison for Clemson Kennel Club. And I was glad to see that this was moved back to committee where it could be discussed a little bit. To be honest, there's just a few things that I'm concerned about as far as in the proposed First one is that personally, I disagree with the 30-day free room and board from another municipality, as my part is a taxpayer unless it is an emergency or a very unusual circumstance. In other words, from her, K. Matthew, if we had to help out, then yes, I have no issue with that. The other part, I think, just needs some discussion. And then, back to the second hat I wear. Where am I here? Okay, as far as the animal care with the premises part, I agree with the change it's gonna make where it says the premises on which an animal is kept shall be kept in a clean and sanitary condition and provide adequate light ventilation and suitable shelter. And as far as the shelter, everybody keeps their animals in different conditions according to what they can afford, but they are gonna need some shelter of some sort, whatever it is. And the wording that you have that's in there, there needs to be some wiggle room because some folks, a tarp is about all they can afford, others can have a beautiful kennel. That part is variable, but the animal does need shelter from the elements, whether it's heat in the summer or cold in the winter. The other part that's a concern is down here where it says water and sustenance. The animals should have access to fresh drinking water at all times. When they're outside, yes, I don't know how you're gonna keep it from freezing unless you have a separate water heater that's there. Question is, is that limited just to an outside situation or inside or for folks that are traveling through the county? Depending on if there's a medical condition, their vets may not want them to have fresh water at all times. It also could be that for those of us that start house training early with puppies, you do want to withhold water, just like you would with a young child who's working on potty training. So there needs to be, you see what I'm saying, a little bit of leeway in there, but when they're outside and they really don't have any direct supervision for someone to refill that water bowl, they need to have that. There just needs to be some understanding of what is and what isn't with that. And basically, those are the main things that I'm honestly concerned about with that. I hope you'll take those thoughts into consideration with that, and thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Lois?
I'm a 42-year resident of Oconee County. I am the treasurer of the Clemson Kennel Club, and I taught dog obedience here in Wahala for 19 years, so I kind of know something. My first thing I want to mention is the title of this ordinance and the definition of animal, because by the title, you just call it animal ordinance, and it really should be companion animal ordinance, and your definition is anything that is not human. And that includes stock animals. And I think you need to make a better definition because sooner or later, Oconee County is going to have some high-shot lawyer that retires to Oconee County that is an animal rights activist that's going to challenge that and say that we aren't keeping our cattle or our pigs or our chickens in humane conditions. So I would really like to see that changed because we need to protect our farmers. I had a problem with... It wasn't a change, but I had a problem with molest or intimidate pedestrians. My dogs are barky dogs. If you walk by my property, they're gonna bark at you, and that could be considered intimidating. There are just some people that are afraid of dogs, and they sound ferocious. Now, they might only be 14 inches at the withers, but they sound ferocious. So I think that could be a little better explained. And I also just spent last weekend helping with the wedding up in North Carolina and stayed at a motor home in a campground. And most people had their dogs tethered when they were gone on a tether that was not as long as 10 feet, because these motor homes that were gigantic were less than 10 feet apart. So if they were on a tether of less than, more than 10 feet, they were under somebody else's trailer and could cause problems that way. So this part in page three, under restraints, you're asking the owners of campgrounds to police that, and I don't think that's fair of the owner of the campgrounds. These dogs seem to be seasoned travelers. Nobody, none of the dogs barked or, you know, growled or acted ferocious or anything else, but they were tethered less than 10 feet. They had beds under their own trailers. So I think that was a little uncalled for for your campgrounds.
You have about 10 seconds left.
10 seconds. Well, I had other things, but I guess that's probably the thing I would really like to see is that you protect your farmers.
Thank you very much. Alright, not signed up, but we need to hear from the people that are gonna enforce the rules. We have Mr. Lyles and Shane.
Yes, sir.
Alright, tell us, tell us what you think.
Well, I hear, with being over the animal shelter for about nine years and watching the change and different people coming in with different ideas coming in and dealing with the ordinance within itself, there is needing some changes, the simple changes from upgrading it. The tethering, everybody has their different emotions about it. Will it increase the shelter rating? Will it cause our euthanasia rate to go up? Will it double our call volume? Are we gonna have to hire more officers on the tether? That's several things to put into it with a tether. It's a, it's a call that probably needs more research, too. She stayed awhile ago about the 30-day case, having a court case. When we make a court case or a law enforcement makes a court case, and we have to house this dog, whether it bit another human being and we've charged this person for general session, we have to bring it into our shelter and we have to house it in a separate kennel. And with courts being backed up and backed up and backed up, and the more that dog or that animal stays in that kennel, the more stress it gets. So that was the reason we changed that on the court proceeding to get the dog out of there within 30 days. But it's, it's, the changes that we made, it was for the better of the county, and it was for better for us to handle these type situations that we've now, that's not really defined in the ordinance, that we went back and defined it to make the victim and the suspect simpler and make it easier for the officer to handle. I'm gonna let Sean know.
While Lieutenant Lyles is talking about, I'll give you an example real fast. We dealt with a case last year, year before with Seneca City where they had seized animals off of property, and it was gonna be a general sessions case. We wound up holding that animal for 11 months in our shelter. After that 11 months, we released the animal back to the owner per Seneca City with no repercussions to the owner. That's the reason we went with a 30-day deal. You know, after 30 days, you know, they have the option of reclaiming the animal or the owner is gonna be responsible for fees accrued for the time we have there, because we do have feeding, cleaning, and everything else that goes through daily at our shelter. And what we had before, there was nothing there in place to dictate what somebody was about to pay. This makes the owner responsible for their animal, which I think, you know, what we got in place right now is gonna be really, really, really good, because what we had before, we didn't have anything before. And now it makes the owner responsible for the animal. I think that's one of the best improvements that we've made in the past couple of years because we didn't have anything in place to enforce that before.
So your changes are following state law?
Correct, yes, sir.
So this, your changes would bring us under, as far as being challenged in the court and everything, this is not something the county is winging it on their own. This is, this puts us under the state umbrella, which has already been challenged, and we're on firm ground there.
Yes, sir. As far as the tethering and everything else goes, there's already, there's already stuff in place for the state right now as far as state charges that can be brought against a person for cruelty neglect charges. We have three certified officers right now that can bring state-level charges against someone if it's necessary. If we follow under the state, if we follow under the state level, that gives us more room to enforce whatever we need to enforce, anything on a cruelty neglect charge, you know, whether it's, whether it's not feeding an animal, whether it's not housing an animal, whether it's tethering an animal improperly, that gives us more room to work on that level because we can enforce state charges.
And this would clean up some of the definitions that the two ladies that spoke are worried about?
Yes, sir. It will explicitly. You can go, you can go through our state charges. It's chapter 47 on the state-level statutes. You can go through, and they address everything we're talking about right now as far as any cruel and inhumane treatment of an animal. And that gives us more room to work. We can bring stiffer penalties. I know for a fact, the state, the state-level cruelty neglect charge carries up to five years and a $5,000 fine, which is a whole lot stiffer than we're looking at at the county level. At county level, we're looking at $1,087.50 is all we're looking at. That's the most we can write for, that's the most we can do on the county level. But a state charge, we can charge felony, and with three certified officers, we've got three people that can bring, can bring state charges.
Does the state, the state statute address the other lady's concerns about cows and chickens?
No, it's pretty, it's almost specifically directed toward companion animals, like what she was talking about. It exclude, there's actually a clause in there that excludes livestock.
Okay.
So, you know, that's not, that's not gonna have any retaliation toward your livestock owners or anything else. It is pretty much directed straight toward companion animals, which is what our main concern is.
Okay. There is state laws about horses and what you can do with horses, because I have had to deal with it. When we first started, we had no certified officers at animal control. I was the only one. So I would have to go back, and when the county ordinance wouldn't handle it, I would have to go back in and sign warrants or write tickets under a state statute. And it got so overwhelming that that's when I started getting more certified officers to go out there and handle, handle these cases. And we have, we have one of the six best county officers in the state, in my opinion.
Oh, I agree.
You, you ain't got anything for Mark or Sean?
One of the things I was talking to our attorney, Mr. Reedon, is the ability of a county can have stricter rules regarding animals than a state is. So that's one of the things that I was just trying to figure out is, and I had read the Title 47, just to kind of see what it was when this whole thing came about, to see what they were calling an animal because of ours, again, non-human species of animals, you know?
Yes, sir.
I don't, I don't wanna bring my cows inside, so they're close enough.
Yes, sir.
You know, so, you know, the domesticated animals, I like how the statements through Title 47 states through the animals, it's actually a lot clearer than what it is. And that's what some people don't realize, this was already in existence. It just, you know, now people are paying attention to it because we're talking about it. So this is not anything that we were changing. To me, we're giving some clarification on what it is. Some of the rules, I mean, I think the great thing that about y'all being up here is, you know, y'all are telling us how to do your job. We shouldn't be telling you how to do your job. Y'all are out there every single day, so I agree with what you're talking about. The one thing that I thought, think that y'all have brought up that doesn't necessarily specify in Section 47 is talking about campgrounds or people that lease their land to others with multiple houses, whether it be campers or tentsites or whatever else. Seems to me we've had a lot of issues with animals running rampant in these areas with nobody to hold accountable unless it's the owner. Oftentimes, these animals are untagged. So it's not necessarily to me, from what I see, it's not, you know, the issues aren't necessarily at South Cove or High Falls or something like that. They seem to exist in other areas where we've got roaming dogs in there with nobody to hold accountable.
Yes, sir.
So am I to understand that the reason why, and just so everybody understands, the prohibition, this is a request, a provision shall apply equally to the owner of a campground or similar transient accommodation site who is hereby required to enforce reasonable restraint requirements upon guests who bring animals on site. The reason for this would be help with prosecution of these roaming animals that we're having specific instances of five or six areas among the county. Is that, can you kind of explain that a little bit about how that got in there and what the reason behind that was?
It's, we've had some very delicate, I'll touch on it, and I'll let him finish it up. We had some very delicate cases that was involved in our county parks, and we were at the point with our hands tied that we couldn't, we couldn't handle that properly. And I'm gonna let him touch on that.
We've got, we've got a couple places throughout the county that are not technically campgrounds, but they do have transient residents is the best way to put it. And we've had numerous problems and numerous problems and numerous problems. But the problem we ran into enforcing the laws was going out and making contact with an owner. And what we dealt with when we went out there, we'd go through and we'd knock on doors and knock on doors and say, hey, you know, we're having troubles with this, we're having trouble with this animal, here's a picture of it, do you know who owns it? Oh, no, there's no animal like this here. And the owner of the area wasn't cooperating, wasn't, wasn't working with us to try to be able to enforce the law. With this in place, we can hold the landowner, whether it be a place we deal with off wherever that has transient people coming in, living in campers, living in trailers, living in tents, whatever, that will help hold the landowner responsible to help, to help us and aid us to enforce that law. Because if we can't make contact with the owner of the animal, we can't enforce the law. But with this in place, we can hold the landowner responsible to make sure his tenants stay in check is what we're working with. It gives us more room to work is the whole deal.
And Title 47 of South Carolina legislature does not cover that.
No, sir, it does not.
Okay. So the main reason for this is to help, is pretty much just to fine is what it is, correct?
Yes, sir. It follows the county ordinance is what I'm following. It won't follow the state.
So the addition of this is for really the, you know, more the, you know, kind of what we've heard here, the idea of tethering animals and proper tethering, that's to me, like, you know, the 10 feet, that's completely separate. To me, that's a judgment call.
Yes, sir.
On what y'all think is, you know, the studies and stuff that y'all have done, the classes that y'all have taken. I would like to see that stay in there strictly on a standpoint of, you know, as you say, it's been a problem, this would help eliminate a problem moving forward, and that's what I'm understanding, okay?
I'd like to touch base, too, if you don't mind. I like what she said earlier. She hit the nail on the head when, you know, we have different economic standards in the county. You might have a nice kennel, everything body nice, but if I'm barely making it and I want a dog, and I'm gonna do the best I can for this dog, and we come up and our hands are tied, we're gonna educate you, we want you to keep that dog because we don't want the dog at the shelter, we want you to keep that dog. And it's just, what's right and what's wrong, we try to educate the people of Oconee County to make our job better, but when our hands are tied, our hands are tied.
Right. And what we have in here on the tethering, I think it should be unsupervised tethering. We're not talking about walking a dog on a leash or anything like that. So I think it needs to specify unsupervised tethering if we move forward with that. The weight, I think it needs to be tossed. I think that's a judgment call on what y'all need to do on there. To me, I don't have any instance of doing that, obviously, that the, what we touch on in there, injury or illness to the tethered animal, that's the main thing in there. You know, the instances where the tether is too short, I don't mind that being in there, but I think the less than 10 feet needs to, I mean, to me, it comes back to y'all doing, you know, making, making a judgment call on there. I do like the use of choke or prong collars. To me, I think that's an accident waiting to happen. Again, we're talking about unsupervised tethering. We're not talking about walking your dog because, you know, those, those work great for training. People love them, people hate them, and I'm not up here to judge on that. But supervision of choke or prong collars works on a lot of different animals. And, but, and I think the six-month age, we already talked about, to me, I think you take that out. So how do you want to go about this? Do you want to just, I mean...
Mr. Chairman, there's, there's three ways. It was referred from council in that original form to you all, and so you can do essentially three things. You can do nothing. You can send it back to council in that same form, or you can have some more work done on it. Unless there's an urgency, I would suggest that, and that more work would be for me to sit down or for staff to sit down with the animal control officers and make sure we pin down, I have the notes from Deputy Honia and Lieutenant Lyles, but just to work off those notes and make sure we get the language clean that has come forth through these last couple of meetings and discussions so we get it precise, and then direct us to do that and then bring it back to council in that form on the next meeting. So it wouldn't come forward today, because I think that's just, would create more of a mess, most likely.
How are we gonna explain to the state of South Carolina that we're exceeding their standards?
We're not really...
Because we can't even raise, put a fee on a speeding ticket, because it's exceeding state law.
True. We cannot, and it goes to that preemption doctrine that we get into a great deal there. The county cannot make illegal something that the state has declared to be legal. The county cannot generally increase a fine that the state has set for particular activity, like speeding on a state road. But when there is a partial preemption, when the state hasn't said, no, this is, only our law applies, like the care of dogs and cats, and where the state has said counties, localities, you all can make additional laws, then we can. And that's what it says in here, but I don't think that anything that we're talking about changing would exceed what the state's doing. We're just, and that's why the state did it this way, so you can tailor it to your jurisdiction, because it's gonna look different here than it would in a very densely populated county.
I don't have any problem with the changes at all, as long as they done, we get our way to, to take somebody to court, somebody comes in with an attorney and says, you see state law, and the judge said, I agree with you, and he throws the whole thing out, then we back square one again.
Yeah, no, I'm with you, and I've got my eye on that. And I think that's why it's important that we sit down and carefully go over each sentence and then get that back to full council.
Sounds good.
So do you just want me to tell you what I, I mean, we had a meeting at 5:00.
I hate to just say, hey, we're just not gonna, I mean, I...
I think, yeah, you can, and I've got those notes, and we've got the minutes, but it can be a motion for staff to work with animal control to refine the ordinance as discussed, and if you want to list, and that could be the main motion, if you want to list out your, your primary concerns or changes, that would help.
So we gonna make a motion right now to send it to council, right?
No. After, the motion would be for staff to work with animal control to refine the ordinance and then for it to be brought back to council.
At a later date?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So here, motion to that effect.
So move.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
I go.
Okay.
I mean, we've had two meetings. I mean, this is two hours that we've had here, and if that was the simple, I mean, if we're gonna talk about it, that's what the meeting, the special meeting today was to talk about this. I mean, if we're just gonna...
Well, we don't, we can, we can, I mean, we got solid waste to do. If you want, you want to put solid waste off and spend the rest of time, I don't have any problem with it.
I think, Mr. Davis, I think the discussion, as I understand it, has been had, and that we are, we're gonna incorporate in there the items that you brought up and the items that have been brought up from the public. It's more likely that this ordinance is gonna be thinner rather than thicker, so when it comes back to council and there's something that's, someone wants to add, that's easier to done than revising or removing and replacing. But if we go back to discussion, you can list the items that, again...
No, I'll just, I'll just send them to you. I just don't understand the point of having meeting after meeting.
I don't have, I don't have a problem. I'll tell Swain, we ain't gonna hear from him, we got a half hour, let's have at it.
That's not what I'm talking about. I just, if we're, if we're scheduling a meeting for animal control ordinance and trying to, you know, hash this out, and then we're just referring it to let them do it, which is fine, then let's don't waste hours doing this. I don't have, I don't have time to waste. I don't. This stuff is important, and that's fine, but we should have done that in the last meeting instead of scheduling a special meeting at 5:00 today to sit here and, you know, but we can vote. I'm good. Let's go on.
I mean, I don't mind... I mean, I don't mind if you, you want, we can sit them, we can sit them up here and we can have at it. Those guys will tell you what they, what we want to do.
Ah.
If you wanna just talk down to me, that's fine too. I don't care.
No, I'm just.
Talked down to all my life, so.
I wasn't talking down to you, I just didn't wanna, I just didn't wanna have an hour that we're not getting something accomplished.
Why you think I got these two standing up here right now? They the one, they the ones that knows what's going on.
I don't disagree with that at all.
Anybody got anything else? Gentlemen, I appreciate y'all coming in today.
Thanks, sir.
Now, we got a discussion of solid waste disposal fees. This is, this is becoming a very hot topic in my district. And the, the bad thing is, we're having people call me up and said, basically, if you're gonna charge me, you'll find it on the road. Uh, and, and you, and you say, and like I said before, it's rough to get fingerprints off of a couch. It's, 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 it, it, what I'm getting from my district is, it sounds good on paper. In reality, the people of Wahala area, people are just gonna throw it out, throw the tires, they're gonna throw everything out. And then we're still gonna pick it up, but we are gonna be the ones picking it up. And I think we need to, uh, I'm not, we need to look at this thing a little bit closer, but, uh, um, you have the floor, sir.
Well, I'm opening up the questions, any questions you'd have here, um, tonight. Um, just go back, just, uh, real brief. Uh, looking at our fee schedule, um, we're, the landfill, it used to be that we didn't get a lot from, uh, the Clemson area, the Pickens area, um, but we are starting to pick up a lot of waste, um, coming in. And we've never really sat down and said, are you from, we haven't carded, asked for driver's license, excuse me. Haven't asked for driver's license to verify where they're coming from, um, cause that, uh, if you've ever been out there on a Saturday morning or, uh, some mil- some days during the week, we have traffic backed all the way out into Wells Highway. So to start asking folks where they're from and verifying it, um, we're, we're taking in a lot of waste from, that's not just O'Conne County residents. And we understand the standpoint, we've, we've heard it, um, I've heard it all my life that I've been into the solid waste, um, industry, that if you charge somebody, they're gonna throw it on the side of the road. Uh, it has been my, uh, experience, um, and, and different ones throughout the state who have implemented these things, that the people's gonna throw it on the side of the road, we'll throw it on the side of the road regardless, whether you charge them or not. Uh, cause we get, we've already, the sheriff department, um, if he was here, they could tell you, the litter officer, they, they go out and pick up couches now a- all the time and bring it down to solid waste. Um, a lot of them in, in every district, it's not just one district. And you find it on the deserted road and all they have to do, and we found them on the road, uh, two miles from the landfill. So it's, uh, it comes to a point of whether, how the county wanna proceed, um, you know, in the regular, regular day-to-day businesses. We've got people who come in, say it's from their house and that, or from their property, um, and you see them on a frequent basis. And as I stated last week, uh, for the most part, uh, the average resident in O'Conne County comes maybe once or twice a year. So when you start looking at that standpoint of how much waste is going into our landfill and then plus you want to increase recycling, the only way you can't increase recycling, you can ask people to do things, but asking only goes so far, um, cause if, I'll give you this instance, the sheriff, I mean, we have speed limit signs on the road. Sheriff departments have to get out there because not everybody does what it says to do. So, um, it's back into y'all's court. We'll do, we're working here, we'll do whatever we need to do to, uh, keep the thing rolling.
Alright, so we got, we got couches, said couches or stuff being thrown on the side of the road.
Yes, sir.
Because it, people lazy by nature. So they're gonna, well, why should I haul it all the way and try to catch Scale House at, before three forty-five, right? That's what it, that's what it get.
Three thirty, yes, sir.
Three thirty.
Yes.
What happens if, we, two things we can do here. We can, we can put extra dumpsters out, different things, say, well, you got a couch, throw it in here. Or whatever you want, we've got dumpsters for that, make it easier for them. Cause then if they throw it on the side of the road or down in bank, but then we have a rough time getting it out, out from down there. The other thing is to, uh, establish a more aggressive recycling program. The furniture and stuff, as I said in previous, we could, uh, either have it out there, we set it off. You got, you got burned out, come get free county furniture. There's, there's, some of it, there's gotta be a way we can do things. Cause after all, we work for, we work for the taxpayers. Uh, they're not, they're, we're not trying to say, well, if you don't like our deal, you go to, uh, solid waste, the waste management. Because the, everyone, everybody pays taxes, our boss. And what I'm hearing in my district in Wahala, people call me up, they'd be very nice about it, and they ain't cussing or, well, maybe a little bit of cussing, but not any threatening, and they're saying, well, if they're gonna do this, you know, how you, how you gonna get, how you gonna get fingerprints off of it? How you, and, um, Mr. Price from the city of Wahala said he has enough problem people going down through Wahala and just throwing it out. Then his guy, his guys have to pick it up.
Well, that goes back to your same point there. Uh, they don't even have to pay for it now, they're still throwing it out. Uh, if you look back at the numbers that we showed last week, we only, we took in, I mean, we took in four hundred tons last year. Uh, but the main part we're looking at is what's actually the, the regular construction demolition that folks are bringing. We took in six thousand tons of that. So we're, we're not talking, we can even waive the fees on furniture if we need to. Uh, and if you, if you wanna look at it from that standpoint, because you don't get as much furniture every year as you do, uh, the other materials. So furniture is, uh, cause, uh, unless you're, uh, as they stated earlier, different, uh, uh, pay grades in O'Conne County and so forth, you don't change out your furniture every year. Uh, so it's something, we get a couch here and there, we get stuff, we, we don't get a whole lot of furniture out on, on, typically each year. I mean, it's something to look at.
When's the fee supposed to go into effect?
January first is what we're gonna do, but we've got that on hold until we make any kind of decision. Yes, sir.
Mr. Harker.
And we've even discussed its, its points too. If we did put these into effect, we could maybe have a, uh, amnesty day once, uh, every six months. If you got a clean out you're doing at your home, I think we just wouldn't want to be inundated with everybody coming at one time. But I mean, there are some things we could schedule out. One thing, I, I would say the idea that you had there about placing containers out, uh, in two thousand and three, they, they took up the C and D containers. They had it along, uh, recycle centers and it really reduced our call volume going to the centers. Um, and we replaced those containers with other things. So if you, uh, I can tell you, last year we took in, uh, we made thirty-two hundred, uh, trips, uh, to recycle centers, making up, making pulls. If you add C and D containers back to the centers, uh, you would probably add another thousand pulls a, a year to that. Uh, cause people would quit coming to the landfill. Um, so it's, it's a, you would, your cost would go up in solid waste transportation.
What was it cost for two people to tow the couch up off the side of a bank in twenty-eight?
Uh, well, it's their hourly rate, but I would say how, how often do you think we get a sheriff's department bringing a couch in? Once a month, maybe?
Right down the roof of my house, they get, on Jess Neville's property, he got mattresses, that Seminole Road. There's a, there's a hole, everybody throws stuff out there and then Jess gotta go pick it up.
See, I still think you're looking at two different problems. You're looking at a litter issue from the sheriff's department versus the solid waste fee and what people say they will do, um, and what they, what they will actually do. Cause if you've got them already throwing it out now, uh, that clientele, that's a different type of clientele you're dealing with. Cause it never crosses my mind to go out and throw out something on the side of the road.
I picked up, uh, six mattresses last Saturday. How much does it cost to get rid of a mattress right now?
Nothing. Cause we, you can take it to Strawberry Farm Recycle Center.
I picked up four toilets. How much does it cost to get rid of a toilet right now?
You can take a toilet to the recycle center and throw it in household garbage.
Two different problems.
Two different problems. I mean, we see toilets thrown out all over the place and you can actually take those to the recycle center if you got one or two coming from your home. So, I mean, we got two different problems you're looking at.
Well, what's it gonna cost after January one to get rid of the toilet?
Toilet, nothing. You can still do the same thing, cause we're not charging at the recycle centers. I mean, this is just landfill and, uh, people bringing stuff into the landfill because you've got, uh, to, in my estimation, a landfill is more like a utility. You've got a set price and then you've got, like I said last week, a fill cost. And it all depends on how much you're trying to keep out of the landfill, um, so you don't have to, um, fill that hole in.
We need to look at issuing decals like in Pickens County for our recycle centers to be sure that we ain't got people coming across.
No, I don't think so, cause I mean, you've got some, I mean, uh, what are you gonna do about the folks who are coming to, uh, to a campground? And they got to go throw their trash away before they leave. I mean, so they're not gonna have a decal unless you make the campground or all of them provide garbage service. And some of those, if the county owned campground, they got it, but you got, you got multiple private campgrounds out there now that may not have trash service. So you're, you're gonna, I've always shot away from issuing decals to everybody. Now, that is something that comes up with our system that we've got now. We could issue decals for the landfill. And it would take a little bit of things we could do, uh, but if you issued decals to folks in the, uh, or have it set up with their address, that when they come in, they have an X number of tonnage they could throw away for free. And then once they pass that, you go into charging them. Um, that may be something we could look at, um.
So in, in mid-January, if I roll up to the recycling center with four bags of trash, how much am I gonna be charged?
A recycle center?
Mm-hmm.
Nothing.
Okay. And if I roll up to a recycle center and I put my recycles where it goes, how much am I gonna be charged?
Nothing.
Okay. If I throw a sofa away in the landfill, how much is that gonna be charged?
Say a sofa, average sofa's anywhere from two to three hundred pounds, you're looking at four to eight dollars.
Okay. So the reason why I bring that up, again, the monetary figure that what y'all are trying to do in, in the landfill, that's what I'm just trying to understand where the thinking is. A lot of people think we're charging for bags of trash.
That's correct.
And that's not correct. Um, and, and I'm not so, so sure I'm on board with charging solid waste fees yet. I, I just.
Correct.
I don't know, what is the estimate of a dollar figure that you're thinking that, what we would get off that? Reason why I have an issue with that is you've got builders, which is one of our number one customers.
Correct.
You can't sit here and say that, you know, you're from Pickens County, cause Pickens County loves, guys love to build over here.
That's correct.
And we love them to build homes over here. So what are, what's your estimate of what we would, I guess you're basing that on your tonnage from this year?
Yes, sir.
Like, what are you talking about monetary wise?
You're looking at, if we charge just the, the portion that we were talking about last week, uh, for residential coming in, throwing away in, just in the landfill, nah, and taking away the brush portion of it, uh, that, nobody has to pay for brush. Nobody has to pay for brock, block, brick, or anything that they've got separated. Um, you're looking at about a hundred and twenty, a hundred and forty thousand dollars. That cause that's sixteen thousand customers. I mean, we're not talking, uh, we're not talking just a few people, we're talking sixteen thousand. So you're averaging about ten dollars a person.
Okay, and what would you, what's the plan with those solid waste fees of a hundred and forty thousand? Like, what would that help with?
Well, right now, all of our fees go back into the general budget. But, but it could be something we could set up, um, potentially to go back in for equipment use or, or things of that nature.
So i- is the, Mr. McColl, while I'm, while I'm, the reason why I'm bringing this up, so we've got a hundred and forty thousand. So is the reason to do this so people will separate this stuff out a little bit better?
Cause we don't know what the end, end portion would be, how much more would they actually bring out? I mean, that hundred, a hundred and forty thousand just off of tipping fees, but that could drop down to a hundred and twenty thousand. But our materials that they separate out could bump us up, um, cause we get a lot of cardboard in the landfill now. Cause everybody, they'll move, they'll pack all their trash in it and just pull, pull out there and they'll throw stuff into the landfill with cardboard. You're looking at, we could pull out several hundred tons of cardboard potentially, uh, scrap metal, different items. Uh, you're talking about couches, um, where some people bring brand, I mean, they bring in pretty good furniture. And if, if it's really good, we, we suggest, especially if they call us first, we'll say, hey, why don't you take it to a Goodwill or somewhere like that first before they ever bring it to us, so. We're doing a portion already trying to keep people from bringing us fairly good furniture. Um, that way, we just want the stuff that you cannot, that's no longer value at all. So there's a potential that number could go up with the sale of recycles that we pull out of the landfill from separation.
We could do, if the cardboard is going into the C and D landfill, we could put it like y'all already got, the C and D landfill, absolutely no household garbage. You got a tenant, you catch people trying to throw a bag of household garbage.
Well, yeah, we, we can't even have household garbage now at all.
You could do the same thing with the cardboard, absolutely no cardboard.
But you'd have, we'd have to have that in some kind of a way to address it.
Well, tell us how you want to do it. We'll, we'll try to accommodate you.
Well, you're talking about a mandate then. I mean, you're, yeah, you're talking about an ordinance for that, absolutely none. And then that goes back to your haulers like Waste Management, uh, and all them, um, are we gonna charge? As we have it now, we would charge them double the fee if they throw it in, um, so, uh.
Waste Management's making money to start with. They're not coming to pick up for free.
That's correct.
They, you got a contract with them. And they're, you're paying them to properly dispose of, of your items. So it's up to, it'll be then be, as a contractor, it should be up to them to conform with you as, you, you're the in, in, in recipient of the, uh, commodity, so to speak.
That's correct. We've already had some backlash from several of the, uh, the companies when they, when we sent this out. Uh, we had a unnamed company from Greenville County who just now started using us over in this area. And they were like, uh, we're not gonna put two containers out. Um, and I was like, well, you'll have to pay the fee when it comes up. Uh, and their solution was, well, what if we don't bring you waste? Well, from our standpoint, if you want to take it to another county, take it somewhere else, that's good for us because that less garbage going in our hole. So we, we've had that stance on things already that, hey, if you're gonna, if you're gonna complain about it, you can either go somewhere else or follow the rules. Cause we're not the only county in the state who have implemented, uh, bans on materials going into their landfill. Different land, cause just out of necessity of land, because you're getting so, it's so hard to get a permit or get an area of land permitted for a landfill now.
What, what are some of the other counties in the state, what, what have they already done by ordinance to say you can't put the cardboard in, uh, paper needs to go to recycling, stuff like that?
They've either instituted fees or they've instituted, um, a separation policy that they require, um, that if they show up, they have to separate it out before they actually throw anything into the landfill. Or they've got a, a tiered, um, fee schedule. Aiken County a few years ago went to a, everybody, everybody pays for shingles, um, before they went to everything else. Um, that way they got everybody, all the haulers, the same problem we had. Everybody was shingling their house multiple times a year. Um, and they started charging everybody a reduced rate for, um, certain items. So, I mean, that's potential. We, I mean, we could say thirty dollars a ton for one item. I mean, we, we've got areas of means that we could change this around, that we could either change the, how much we charge uh, for residential type things and then give a fee for, if you, it's free if you recycle it or bring it down. I mean, there's multiple ways we can do this.
Could you get a copy of one of those ordinance where, where we got, the, the, the county has already got a, say, you're gonna have to separate it at the C and D, now talk about the cardboard, packing, paper, and stuff like that ordinarily goes into our C and D?
Well, most of them don't have it from a standpoint of item by item. They'll have, if it's like cardboard, they just won't say, uh, here, here it is, here's the fee for this, here's the fee for without. So that's typically what they're doing already.
So they don't have ordinance, they just have a policy?
They have a policy.
So policy is something you could help this council?
Yes, sir. We could, we could form a policy in, I mean, pretty much what we've got in ordinance now, we could bring it out and separate it. It, it depends on how you want to pursue this. I mean, there's, there's more way to, um, more than one way to do this. We just gave you the simplest way. Uh, keep it simple for the public that, hey, you, it's one or, one or two things. Cause there's not a lot, where we talking about recycling at landfill, you're, you're talking about cardboard and metal. And that's about it. Maybe some lumber issues in there somewhere, but that's a whole nother ballgame that you don't really want to get into. Um, but the simplest two things is metal and cardboard.
Could the lumber, can we take it and chip it?
Not really, uh, cause you get all, it's. Not really, uh, cause you get all ki- it's, most, most loads that come in with lumber is so, it's already so mixed up with everything else in there, cause you're gonna have concrete on it, you're gonna have a wire, um, uh, and all those issues that you're running there, um, you're really getting no benefit out of chipping it.
Well, sorry, my, if we could chip it, use a magnetic separator and we could, we could sell chipped wood, uh, to paper mills, um, and al- also sell chips to, uh, different places that, like these carpet manufacturers, like, oh, with Dalton, Georgia and, uh, what's that big paper mill up in North Carolina? Canton, no, Canton's in Georgia, that, that burn a lot of chips for steam.
Well, the issue that comes out with, with that, there's, there's another issue with there. Um, the lumber we get, um, there's a, at a solid waste conference I went to two years ago, uh, Ori County started chipping their material. Uh, they've chipped pallets and their pallets, they could not sell for boiler fuel because the material is too dry to burn. They have to have a, a certain wetness in there to keep their furnace rolling. So, then they had to partner with another company to get like fresh wood grindings in. The other issue is something that, uh, Mr. Davis brought up last week sorta, uh, uh, is we don't have, we don't have this huge volume. I mean, twenty-five thousand tons of material sounds a lot. When you start breaking it down by item that you get brought in, same thing with glass and plastic, it, it mounts up, um, but we don't have a lot that we can say, hey, we're getting into business with three hundred tons of this material. Cause a, a boiler place, they may take three hundred tons a day. And so, we're, we're doing it over a year where they're using it in one day. So, by time it, the, the cost effectiveness of, for us to grind certain things, uh, goes way down, um, when you're talking about the amount of material you've got on hand.
We used to start looking at partnerships with other counties. This is, you know, what we're talking about now is we could do this and we ca- could do this. Uh, five years from now, it could be mandated. We're gonna have to do it. We don't have any choice.
Well, they had a glass, um, symposium about two years ago, uh, when this first came out with, um, Sunoco refusing to take glass. Um, and there was ten counties involved over near the Spartanburg Greenville area, cause they produce a lot more glass than we do. And even at that time, they kinda backed off from it, said it was easier just to either, you can throw glass in a C and D landfill as well, um, cause it, it's not a, uh, it's not a hazard, uh, material that has to go to a, uh, municipal solid waste landfill. So, a lot of those counties started throwing it in, uh, cause they could use it, they can get a modification to their permit to use part, part of that glass as a cover. Um, so they started doing that.
You pulverize it?
But, but they were just rolling it out there in their ro- on roll-offs and just dumping it and then run over it with their compactor and said it was covered. Um, and that's, that's the cheapest way you go. Uh, cause then they don't have to use dirt, they're just using glass. So, I mean, it's, when you start looking into it, it, it sounds really good on paper until you start looking at, well, they gotta drive it fifty miles to us to get it to us. Um, and they don't have tractor trailers, they're gonna be bringing it on roll-offs. And they can only get eight tons to a roll-off to haul down to interstate, um, at four dollars a mile. Uh, then you start, it costs them more to haul it to us than to dump it in their own landfill.
Is there a way to determine, I know you talked about people from Greenville bringing that over, obviously, they could easily say they're working on an O'Conne County job or whatever that way.
That's correct.
Um, when they're, and I don't know, some of this stuff may be more expensive than just taking it in anyway and figuring out a way to expand the, the time on it. Because I'm not against not having the fees, but focusing more on, um, what is going in there. Cause I know from some of the builders, the, they've talked about, they have the big, um, bins that they put everything in.
That's correct.
And they dump that in there. When they dump that in there, the entire thing counts as the weight.
That's correct.
With our new rules. Instead of having it separated out in two or three of those bins, I don't know how you would go about emptying those, cause a lot of times they'll load those, that's what the stack stone comes in most of the time.
Well, we've also looked at it from the standpoint of how much is it actually in the load before we would actually start looking at it. Cause if you've got half the load is recyclable, then, then we charge the extra fee. Um, cause we, we, we looked at the same thing. I mean, if there's one piece of cardboard in there, one piece of metal and the rest of it's lumber, it's ninety-nine percent lumber. I mean, we're not gonna go all or nothing type deal. Um, cause it, it'd be hard to do. But, what we've seen, I'll give you an instance, we had, uh, when they were doing the Hobby Lobby up here, um, the company came up there, um, they redid those Kmart building, they, one guy, he dropped it for metal and the other material. And, uh, when they were starting to bid that out, we had several of them call us. And the guy who got the job was the one who actually separated things out. Uh, Hobby Lobby was willing to pay a little bit more for two containers, uh, upfront, cause they said, hey, if we're not having to pay for all this material going into landfill, it's gonna be cheaper in the long run. And it was for them. And that's something we're trying to persuade a lot of the haulers. You actually get more business upfront, but it will cost the end user less, if that makes sense. So, it, it's more of a learning curve. It, people, they've always dumped it this way and now we've got change. It goes back to nineteen ninety-one when we started opening up recycle centers, how many people really recycled a lot at first. I mean, we go back to look at the numbers. It's been a, we're twenty-something years in, in the future now and we're still trying to encourage people to recycle, fight the same battle.
How many customers did you have come through there last year?
Total?
Mm-hmm. Did you say sixteen thousand?
Sixteen thousand. That was just for the C and D non-paying. All total, we had over forty, forty-nine thousand.
Well, we could start out with a little, a little bit of time getting people, say, okay, you gotta have to pull, you're gonna have to pull the cardboard out or else, you know, you, we can't, we can't.
Well, see, we've been doing that for a year and a half now, advertising no cardboard in here.
So, the focus...
But you said, but you said it's still dumping.
They're still dumping it.
Well, if you, if you come in there, if I was to come in, I was Mr. Hardhead, I was to come in there with a bunch of cardboard and your tenant was to tell me, turn it around, take it back, separate it. I'd learn, I'd learn from that, that one incident that I need to do this. And it might cause a little bit of problem at first, but everybody get the idea, well, don't throw the cardboard in there, let's, let's set it off to one side at the site. You know, once the punk, once you get on to doing something, you get used to doing it, you don't think nothing about it.
Well, and we've rented that too already. Um, Amy can tell you as well, um, we've, uh, we've had those, we've tried to turn away and they're, they're in a roll-off truck and we, and they've got it lifted up. Uh, they're not putting it back down, they're gonna dump it and leave. And so, what we've done on that case is we've called the sheriff's department, they've sent out a litter officer and they've had a talk with the guy. And, uh, and that'll change them faster than making them go back home. Um, cause then that becomes littering. They left something that they weren't supposed to leave.
Well, that's what that new ordinance we just passed concerning people dumping on, dumping your stuff on, or leaving your stuff on somebody else's property.
That's correct.
And, and that's, that's gonna help out a lot.
What if we did a weight limit, say, thousand, fifteen hundred under. So, as a resident, if I'm coming up in there with a sofa, I mean, I'm well under. I mean, obviously I could pick up, you know, sofa. So, if we did something like that where you head up to fifteen hundred, the things that you're trying to get that I hear you saying problems about is people that continually come in here.
That's correct.
And they're coming in there with five, six thousand pound loads.
Well, you're looking at some coming in with a ton load each time.
Okay.
So, if you put it at a thousand pounds, and that's what, um, um, I believe Aitken County, go back, use Aitken County again, they set it at a thousand. Um, that, from, for most, and that was for anything, shingles, couches, whatever, one number. And you came in and it deducted off that number. Once you hit a thousand, then you started paying. I mean, and we've got the capability of doing that now, so.
Could you tie, could you tie it back to the people, he's talking about coming, tie it back to the building permit?
Well, you, you tie it back to your drivers, like your, your property that you own.
Yeah. I think that the thing is, is what we're trying to, you know, we almost got three. You got your, your, your non-recyclers, you got your out-of-county people, and then you got your citizens that are coming in there just throwing away something once a year. I think if you, I'd have to think through that a little bit more, but I mean, if you said a thousand or even fifteen hundred, if I'm running a business, I'm not gonna come bring five, fifteen hundred loads.
Correct.
Um, but at the same time, we're also trying to encourage business here. So, when we're looking at the fee structure, I, I think the, it seems to me the fees are fair for the users that use it, because it's a, we do a good job and the more they separate it out. But I think, like you're talking about the bins and the recycling bins and things like that, I know, I guess as the people build houses, I know it's a pain in the butt to do it, but if it saves, saves money, maybe there's some incentivizing stuff that we can do for those that, that help. I don't know. Cause I know we charge to drop a container, correct?
Well, we don't, see, we don't actually...
We don't do it.
We don't do it. The companies do it, yes.
Do it. Um...
I think what we need to do for right now is to have Mr. Martin put a notice out in the, in the media, cause I'm, everybody thinks that we're gonna start charging to throw household garbage at the convenience centers. I've been getting a lot of calls on that. They, there, uh, it's a lot of misinformation and that's gonna, that's gonna calm people down a lot and say that the, this only, this only concerns the C and D landfill. And then, but Mr. Davis said we could put a, uh, everybody gets fifteen hundred pounds, whatever we, we agree on later on, before January one, before these fees take place. We gotta do something before then to, uh, settle that situation for the C and D.
And, and we can move the date out too and you can just get it, we'd rather get it done right the first time than have to back up once we put it out. That's the reason we, we would like to have six months. So, if we start over now to make sure we get everything in place, whatever night, well, let's pick another, put a, pick a date, put it out there into information. One issue that you're talking about, the reason there was so much confusion, uh, on the holidays, we get phone calls, is the transfer station open? Yes, we're open. Then they show up at a recycle center and they're like, they call back, you weren't open. Well, you asked about a transfer station. Well, that's what I call it down by my house. Or they call it a, uh, satellite center or whatever. So, the biggest thing is to make sure they understand what the definition of our recycle centers are. And that's the reason we, we tried to get the names changed a few years ago. We went from convenience center to it's a man recycle center where you deposit your household garbage. And, um, so, we got a frequently asked questions also that we've been working on. So, we can get that published too. Um, and, and it lists every one of those questions you've been asking tonight, uh, that we could put in the paper, we can put it on our website, put it on the county site and say, here's a frequently asked question. What actually facilities where you have to be charged and put the addresses on it and go from there. And then we can run that past y'all first and then, and then put that out there.
Cause ever since we put that little old sign up, vol- uh, what, what I said voluntary, we don't need ordinance, please put your cardboard, look how mu- look how good that worked. I mean, they're, they're piling the cardboard in on us at the convenience centers, which is really good. And we just by, by the polite way of asking, don't pass no ordinance, we don't have to do that, politely ask somebody. You get a lot more, uh, nicer response by asking nicely than, than you, you with, uh, trying to ram it down your throat.
I understand.
How difficult would it be, let's say you buy, buy a house and you're cleaning it, cleaning it out and you're renovating the house. How difficult would it be to include that as part of the permit process for them if they show up at the C and D landfill and say, hey, I applied for a dump permit because I bought, I don't wanna call it an investment property, but the things like he's talking about, I don't wanna discourage somebody from cleaning out. I mean, just from the stuff that came out of Utica from one yard.
Well, that's...
You know, how, that, that's the thing that I would like to see addressed because I think to me...
We could have a one-time clean-out. And I mean, like, maybe for every couple of years for a certain piece of property. We could do something like that. I mean, that wouldn't be a hard to do at all. Uh, cause we already do, we've kinda done that now. We have lists of places that people who are cleaning out, um, and same thing with Utica Mill. If you, if something, especially if it's county-driven, uh, we, we set that up as a project and we, we bring it all in under that project name, so we can keep a track of where it's coming from. Um, so, some of those things where like clean-outs, the clean-outs that we, we have issue with, um, is, well, I, it's coming from, uh, I got, I bought a house and we're, we're gonna clean it out. And then that same company comes, or same person comes back when we bought another house, where they're buying rental properties. Well, you're now, you're a business according to our previous ordinance and our current ordinance. So, they're still a business. And so, we, we track them down and we, we even got it now. So, we ask for the property address and the owner's name and we pull it up by, go on our county site and we show, hey, this is where you're, this is, you bought a piece of property, but your taxes are being paid from a different address. So, we know that's a rental property. So, and once, once we pull that out, um, they don't, they don't have a complaint, so.
Then it, then they're abusing the system.
They're abusing the system. Yes, sir.
And I think that's the largest concern within a lot of citizens, just making sure. I think a weight would be fine. I mean, I, I mean, I'm fine at, you know, fifteen hundred. I mean, I, I don't have an issue with that.
We could do fifteen hundred. That wouldn't be a problem at all.
But, um, you want a motion to have him continue to meet and kinda talk?
Yes, cause we need, we got, the first year is coming fast.
I'd make a motion, um, for solid waste to continue talks with, uh, the administrator.
Yeah, I'd like to add, let's add to your motion that we publish that convenience centers, we're not gonna charge you for your household garbage. Get that out there because of the, of the, the mount, the mound of misinformation.
Okay.
Uh, and I think that'll, that'll soo- calm the telephone down a lot. I'll second.
Okay. I, I gotta second.
Oh.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, no. I, I'm just gonna second it. Go ahead.
Okay.
All right. Thank you all.
Now, we haven't voted yet.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Clear as mud. Thank you, Mr. Steele.
Motion to adjourn the law enforcement, public safety, health and welfare.
We're adjourned.
Okay.
And motion to adjourn the council, special council.
Yeah. There's a motion to adjourn the special meeting.
Suck it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.